Lastly, some of you submitted questions at the entrance. Those questions will be delivered up to me later and will be asked as time allows. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce the candidates for this evening's forum. For Mayor, we have Najra Masad and Toby Leonard. Ward one, Karen Foreman, Michael McLaughlin. Ward three, Don Friend, Kevin Mettler. Ward five, Jessica Hatampa and Kevin Borse. Please join me in thanking them for being here this evening. Before we start our first question, which will go to Najra, and we'll go around the horn this way for the first question, each candidate, please make sure you hit your button to turn the green light on in your microphone and then everyone will be able to hear you. Sound good? Great. All right, now we'll begin with our first question. Ashley.
All right. There we go. All right. Well, everybody, could you please tell us who you are and why you are running for Mayor or for City Council? And Najra, we'll start with you.
Thank you very much, Ashley. I'm Najra Masad and I'm running for Mayor of Mankato. And why am I running? That's a very easy question. I know you've heard me say this a million times. This community is a family to me and all I want to see is the best that Mankato can be. And in the last four years, I've proven that it has been. We have grown unbelievable in Mankato and it takes a village to do that. So I can't take all the credit. I am pleased to say that our staff is phenomenal. With their direction, we do make very, very difficult decisions. And I believe the decisions that we have made in the last four years, or I have made, I should say, have helped grow. It has helped me grow as a person in this community and caring for others, whether it's our businesses, our small businesses, to our higher education, to our young children. The livability in Mankato is what's important because if we don't have livability in Mankato, we can't draw families to this community. So there's a lot going on. I could go on for more than two minutes of what we need to do and why I want to run. I believe I've done a great job being an advocate for Mankato. I take pride when we have new businesses come and we do the cutting of the ribbons. I take pride in talking with people and listening to our citizens, their concerns and what is most important to them. Because each one of us has something that is important to us, might not be important to someone else, but it is to us. And so for me, I want to listen, I want to hear, and I want to help grow this community to be a place that everyone can be proud to live in. Thank you.
And Toby, you can go ahead.
Hello, I'm Toby Leonard. And actually, why am I running? I've kind of fallen in love with Mankato. I'm originally from Minneapolis. I moved here approximately 30 years ago. And I've got my degrees here from MSU, both my bachelor's and master's degrees, and also raised my family here. My daughters are now college age and they've moved away for college, but otherwise, this is an amazing city. It's got a lot to offer. It is very diverse. You have a lot of options. It's got everything we can get in the Twin Cities in a small hometown kind of scale. And from my background, my background was academic advising and college professor, and now I work as a counselor. And my goal is, is to make it so that we're inclusive and everyone can enjoy the city. Everybody can grow. And as we talk about growth, the city is growing. We're seeing a fairly good expansion. We're seeing a lot of new people coming in. We've seen a lot of businesses coming in. As we're expanding, let's take a look at the infrastructure. Let's make sure that we crunch all the numbers to make sure that we can continue this growth and ensure that we have services for everyone, so that everybody can participate in the city, everybody can enjoy it. And that's when number crunching is one of my expert things, because my background is science. So making sure that we can objectively, clearly ensure that this growth can continue sustainably. And that is why I kind of like Mankato and I want to be your mayor.
I'm Karen Foreman. I've been on the Mankato City Council and the Mankato Economic Development Commission for 12 years. I'm also the city representative on the Highway 14 partnership, the Grants Committee, the City County Committee. I'm co-chair of the Coalition of Greater Mankato Cities Transportation Committee. I serve on their Board of Directors as well. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Affinity Plus Federal Credit Union, which has 230,000 members, 58 locations across Minnesota, and handles almost $4 billion in assets. I've lived in Minnesota since nineteen, in Mankato, excuse me, since 1987. I retired from MSU 12 years ago. I have two children, five grandchildren, and they live in Mankato, Denver, Galveston, Texas. And the two youngest live on a farm in Cannon Falls and they raise Red Herford cows, which we get to go visit. I've lived in Diamond Creek since 2015. I'm looking forward to four more years on the council because we have a lot of projects that we've started. And it's always great to see something finished and get to the end and do that last little tweaking that needs to be done. When I started on the council, we were talking about Turtle Lot Pool. Well, we just did the bids for Turtle Lot Pool. It's going to take a year and a half, it's going to take more than that. It's going to take a while to get Turtle Lot Pool done. And it's going to be exciting to see that happen. We're going to look at building splash pads up in the hilltop area. And Highway 14 next year, oh, it's going to get done after 40 years of working on that. And that is really exciting to see that. So in looking at all of our projects, it's also going to be good to work with the legislature next session and see that we get our bonding for finishing out our wastewater treatment plant. Our infrastructure is so important, that's part of why businesses are here and it's part of why they stay here, is we have good, dependable, reliable, affordable infrastructure. Water, sewer, storm water. We plowed over 80 inches of snow last year. We have 16,000 trees on our boulevard that we maintain. It's a lot of, it's a lot of things that are there and it's going to be good to see some of these projects finally get to the ribbon-cutting stage, which we all enjoy doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foreman.
All right, we got it figured out. So first, I just want to say thank you to our moderators. You kind of got your work cut out for you, trying to keep Irishmen on time with the microphone. Thank you to the fellow candidates and my opponent, Karen, for your willingness to participate here tonight, express your views before the community at the tasks that are before the city. My name is Michael McLaughlin. I'm running for the City Council Ward one seat. Ward one is generally hilltop area, starting at Bethany going to the east side of town. I grew up on the north end of town in the Turtle Lot Park neighborhood, went to Franklin Elementary, graduated from Mankato East High School. I attended South Central for a few semesters and then finished my last semester, enlisted in the Marine Corps as an infantryman and deployed twice in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. At the end of my enlistment, me and my wife, Megan, moved back home at the end of 2007 to the Mankato area so I could have finished my bachelor's degree at Minnesota State. We were fortunate enough in early 2008 to purchase my grandparents' home on Plainview Avenue, which is in Ward one, the Kennedy School neighborhood, generally, and we've been there ever since raising our three children. Carly's 13, Marcus is six, and Aaron is three. We have a great neighborhood. We have fantastic neighbors. We really, truly feel blessed to live where we do and have the opportunity to raise our family in this community. So it was part of that blessing that spurred me, a recognition of that blessing that spurred me to file for City Council, but also my own personal reflection on being very aware that without this community and this city that I grew up in, I would not be the complete person that I am today. So out of that position of gratitude, I looked for a way where I could serve and give back to my community, repay that debt or pay it forward, and City Council, it seemed like a natural avenue. Mankato is a growing and changing community, and I believe it's important, as we grow and change, that we have a dedicated, present, elected body to help steer that community in the future. So future families think this is a great community to raise their kids, to work, to go to school, to retire in, or all the above. So when I'm elected, I plan on doing just that, being engaged and present for my residents all year round, but also looking for ways to foster communication between city staff and residents, because I really think there is an appetite for that from what I've gathered from talking to residents. Then also asking, or acting as that conduit between residents and the staff to help troubleshoot issues wherever possible.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, and Don, to you, please.
Thanks, Ashley. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate it very much. And thanks to Greater Mankato Growth for the opportunity so we could all be here together. You know my name, Don Friend. I'm a professor at MSU. And I am often asked, why are you in Mankato if you didn't grow up here? I was offered a job. Now, I was offered a job 25 years ago and I am thrilled to be here. It's the best decision we ever made to accept a job here and an honor to, with my lovely bride, Lisa, who's here this evening, to raise three children here in Mankato. They've all graduated from Mankato Public Schools. We now have a grandchild in preschool. I grew up on the west coast and I was, when I finished my doctorate, I was offered a job here. I'm still here. Now, what I study is complex relationships between people and environment. And this community has been absolutely wonderful to me and my family, and I wanted to give back. And city government is complex. How we allocate infrastructure dollars, how we communicate with all of the people in a ward, in the city, with local businesses, with K-12 education, with higher education. And I have been doing this for years. And so I look forward to being able to give back to the community that has given to me and my family for many years. Thanks.
And Kevin?
There we go. Again, thank you. My name is Kevin Mettler. I have grown up in the Mankato area. I was born in North Mankato and spent most of my life in Mankato. I have been lucky enough to have met my wife, Patty, who's here tonight, at Mankato State. I still call it Mankato State because that's where I graduated from, and I know that it's changed, but that's where I graduated from, was Mankato State. Met my beautiful wife there. We have been lucky to raise all three of our adult children in Mankato and seen them flourish in this beautiful city. I've been employed for the past 25 years, several different jobs. To tell you the truth, I'm really, this is the first time in several years that I only have one job. And my wife's getting sick of me being stuck around the house, so she's asking me to find something else to do. So I think this really fits into, into where I'm at right now. But for the past 20-plus years, I worked as a youth minister at Holy Rosary Church. I coached football for 25 years at Mankato Loyola, and I've spent the bulk of my years working in the corrections field primarily with people suffering from addictions to alcohol and drugs and mental health issues, spending my time advocating for them to receive second chances in the community that they dearly need, working with employment and housing agencies to give them those second chances. So I've really spent the bulk of my adult career advocating for people and, and standing up for people that aren't always listened to. I believe right now, there's, there's some, there's a large part of our community that feel like they're not listened to. And I want to advocate for them. And that's what, like I said, I've spent the last number of years doing, is making sure that I'm always open, my phone's always on, my computer's always open, and wanting to listen to people. If somebody calls me and they have an issue in their cul-de-sac with something, I need to get out there. Okay? And if, if there's a budget, I need to get out in front of the people that are setting the budget, that are working on the budget, and find out exactly what their needs are and why they're asking for those needs. And then I need to go back to my community and be able to share that with them and the importance of why we need those things, and then work together to develop a better way of getting along.
Thank you, sir.
So that's me. Sorry.
All right, and we have another Kevin.
Kevin, number two. I've lived in Mankato for over 40 years. And unlike a lot of people here, I actually chose Mankato. I grew up in a military family, traveling all over the country, living in numerous places. I went to, I think, four grade schools and three high schools. When I graduated from college, I had an opportunity to choose where I wanted to live. And I did some research and I came to visit and I realized that this was my town. This is where I wanted to be. So I've, I've raised a family here. I've been in business. I started a number of businesses here, Domino's Pizza, Subway, Buffalo Wild Wings, Jersey Mike's. Along the way, I sat on a number of boards. I had a lot of community involvement. I was on the Junior Achievement of Mankato Board of Directors. I was on the Volunteer Center Board of Directors, and I was also president of the Blue Earth County American Cancer Society. So I've always been heavily invested in the community. And so the question is, you know, why, why am I choosing to run for City Council? And I just simply look at it as one more opportunity to do things for, for this community. I also realize that, given the incredible growth over the last 20 years, that we're reaching a tipping point. And one of those tipping points is going to be revolve around public safety. As, as the population gets larger and larger, there's going to be more issues with crime and with, with managing public safety. And I, and I really want to get involved in that. I think we have an opportunity here as we grow. A lot of cities get out of hand at this point and businesses stop coming and the population stops growing, and I want to be part of making sure that that doesn't happen to Mankato.
Thank you. And Jessica?
Thank you. My name is Jessica Hatampa. I am from Mankato. I grew up in North Mankato. I went to Mankato West High School and graduated with a marketing degree from Minnesota State Mankato. I then worked for Greater Mankato Growth and then started my real career working at State Farm Insurance with my husband, Aaron, on North Riverfront Drive. So I've been in insurance for the last 16 years, helping run our business. We have five kids, two are in college, and then they are 10, nine, and six. So the reason that I chose to run for City Council four years ago was because of all of my involvement with the community, working on a variety of different boards. I was on the Educare Foundation Board as the chair, Junior Achievement, Children's Museum Fundraising Committee, My Place, work with United Way. And finally, my husband said, well, you're so involved in the community, why don't you reach the highest position that you can and really go help everyone? And I've really enjoyed my time on the City Council, getting to know all of the neighbors. And this time, I'll have a very different ward than we had last time, no more West Mankato or Sibley Park. But I think having someone, when, when I joined the council that was younger, that represented families, people with kids, I visit different places than many of the other council members right now do. They don't, aren't necessarily at the parks or at All Seasons Arena to notice what the problems are. So that's why I would like to continue. We have our strategic plan coming up next year, and so being involved with the next five years of the strategic plan is something I very much look forward to.
Thank you.
Great. Nice job, everybody. We're pretty much on time, so thank you. We're going to keep it going that way. So now that we're well acquainted, we're going to get into the issues and we're going to start down here, Jessica, so our friends over here don't fall asleep and make sure that we're listening here. So we're going to talk about budgets and taxes, something that's really important and top of mind for most voters. So setting the budget and property tax rates is one of the most critical roles of the city council. How would you approach balancing the needs to make strategic investments in our community while also minimizing property tax rates? Are there any specific priorities that you think deserve additional funding consideration? Jessica, to you.
That's a very long question. When approaching the budget, I use my own personal experience with small business and looking at our government budget and our city budget like that. I don't look at it as it's just taxpayer money that is just always there and we have over $130 million budget. So it's easy to just say, let's spend money on everything, because most of the things that come before us, they all have merit and they're all a priority, but you have to decide. So for instance, this year, we've kept the levy the same for the last 11 years, but keeping the levy at that level would have meant raising citizens' taxes by 13 and a half percent. And I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think we can continue to have service at the same level, yet reduce taxes, because your taxes that go up, it's, it's a meaningless number based on the county assessor. And being able to advocate as the only one on the council that advocated for the lowest taxes that we could possibly charge our citizens while keeping everything the same, still increasing our budgets in certain areas like public safety, which I think that would be the one area that we've done a good job of continuing to grow every year, purchasing things like body-worn cameras, a drone to assist in missing persons. I think those are the priorities for the budget moving forward, along with getting a better handle on some of our existing assets and making sure that we're doing a better job of saving for the future, because the, some of the projects that have come forth in the recent years, there's been $0 that have been saved for them, and I think maintaining our assets will be an important thing as we move forward.
Great, thank you. And if anybody would like the question repeated along the way, feel free to ask. So I'm happy to repeat it. So Kevin, to you, what would be your budget priorities?
There you go. There we go. I'd ask you to repeat the question if that would cut into my time. As far as budget priorities, the, you know, obviously, things like infrastructure are important and managing the city are important. And they, and, and those are the things that should be the focus and should come first. As, as far as the, the recent increase in property taxes, I, you know, I went back and I looked at, at this forum from two years ago, and it sounded as if that was on the horizon and everybody knew about it. And that concerned me, because everybody seemed to know about it. And yet it kind of hit full bore and the city had to come in and say, well, we want, I think it was 14% increase, and it was negotiated down. So, you know, I haven't been privy to the planning process, but I'd really love to get in and take a look at the planning process and see how that happened. You know, as far as budgeting is concerned, you know, budgeting is not an exact science, but it certainly can be fairly accurate if you, if you do it right. And so I would want to get in and tear that apart. I'm a spreadsheet guy and, and I would definitely like to get in and tear the budget apart and see, you know, where, where are we fat, where are we thin, and what can we do about it? As far as the taxes are concerned, we've had exponential growth. When you have exponential growth and the rates stay constant, you've still got exponential increases in revenue. So those should, those should hold through. And I understand things happen, and that's something I'd want to look at, but generally, growth itself should provide additional revenue and it should be commensurate to the need. So, you know, we can't go on raising property taxes or income taxes ad infinitum. So that's something I definitely want to get into and, and keep an eye on.
Thank you. Kevin?
You're good. Yeah, go ahead. Forever? You could have told me that. No, I'm just kidding. So I talked a little bit about this before in my introduction, and I'm kind of a real hands-on guy. I, I, I'm not going to sit up here and try to tell you I know everything about the budget or where it's been in the past, but my, what I see my job as, again, is working as that in-between, in-between the people that are, are doing the work. So the managers of the street department, the managers of the infrastructure, I need to meet with them and I need to figure out why. I need, I need them to tell me why. Because like I said, I'm real hands-on. I, I, I need to understand what, what their needs are. And then I have to go back and, and, and let the people that I work for, who are the citizens of Mankato and specifically the citizens of Ward three, know why these needs are, are there and why, why the, why the city needs them. Again, I, I, I'm not going to try and fool you or tell you anything that, you know, you don't know. I, I, I don't have a lot of, a lot of experience with the city budget. I've worked on budgets, I've set budgets, I've worked underneath budgets, I understand them. But again, I really believe the only way that I can do the job for the city and the people in it is to be boots on the ground, working with the people that are setting the budget and explaining to the people that I work for, which is you.
Thank you, Kevin. Don?
That's a big question. How would I prioritize? I too appreciate spreadsheets. I would want to dive in and see everything that's there. But I would also place a great amount of trust in the professional people that work for city government, who full-time, all day, every day, are aware of what are the infrastructure needs, what does it cost? They will constantly have forecasts, but as a city council member, my job is to critique that and to take a second look, to have another set of eyes. And so I too would communicate with constituents, what's important to you today? What is really but in your pocketbook? And so many of the people here in town are not property owners, although their rents are going up exorbitantly. And so are they leaving town? How can we keep rent payers in town so that landlords stay in town, so that we maintain tax revenue? And also, if population is growing, that should mean that we should have a incremental increase in revenue. That's if we're having more tax-paying properties. So these are all balances. I think the most important things to keep track of are what are the existing city services? Can we maintain them at the same levels? And if we can't, whew, what can we afford to let go of and not financially afford? What can we afford in our standard of living, in our quality of life, in our public safety? We certainly can never sacrifice clean water. You can't sacrifice police and fire services. And, but you've got to make hard judgment calls. And this would take everybody on the council working together and consulting with all of our citizens as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Michael, to you.
It was such a long question, I couldn't even write the whole thing down.
Budget priorities.
Budget priorities. So I do have experience in the private, private sector and nonprofit sector and now the government sector for the last six years, working with budgets. In my, my current capacity with the county at departmental level, I form my budget, work with the administration and county board to make sure that we are focusing on service delivery and needs versus wants. So I would say that would be my approach to the, the city council and the city budget, is first, investing on our existing infrastructure assets, our existing water treatment, our existing facilities, before entertaining needs. I think something that gets overlooked, especially in this market, is our human assets, our staff that work for us, our existing staff in this competitive labor market right now. I do not think that should be overshadowed. I do not think we should overlook those assets to our community and to our city. And so we most commonly look at, you know, All Seasons Arena, we look at our water treatment, but we forget about the people that run that water treatment, that run All Seasons Arena every day. And so before we take on 22-foot water slot, tall water slides at Turtle Lot Park and other things along those items, I think maybe we should invest in our existing infrastructure and our staff that are here and deliver those services that our residents need and plan and count on every day.
Thank you, sir. Karen?
The first priority in looking at the budget is, how do we preserve what we've already got? So what do we need to do to maintain what we already have in assets? And water is one of the main reasons that a city exists, giving our residents clean water. And they get up in the morning and they take care of that. And when you're done with that, we need to clean that dirty water and put it back in the river so it's environmentally safe. So maintaining our current assets, looking at our public safety. If there's one thing that people will consistently say when I ask them why they move to Mankato besides a job, it's a safe community to live in. That's what they think. So public safety is always something I'm looking at, seeing how we can improve in that area, how we can maintain. The other area that is important is looking at retention of employees. We have the same problem every business has here right now, hiring and retaining employees. So it's important to look at how we can best facilitate that, because having been on the council for 12 years, I can tell you, we've got great employees out there. We really do. And they love working here in the city. The other thing that you have to balance when you're looking at all this is, what do the decisions we make do to our bond rating? We sell bonds every year to finance what's going on. And we have to look at what's happening with that bond rating. So it's always, it's always balancing, looking at what we can do with what we have and maintaining that. And, you know, I, I agree, relying on the the staff is what you do when you're on the city council, because they really are the pros, and they are really good at what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Toby?
Okay, this is a numbers question. This is my world. Basically, as soon as Jessica said it was $130 million budget, I crunched the number and realized that with 42,000 residents in Mankato, that's $3,095 per resident. That means our question should be is, for each resident, they're paying $3,095 to us. What are they getting for their money? So we should actually be taking a look at some of those things. So when we're looking at the budget, we should be looking at, what are we doing that's going to do the most good for the most people, so that we can help everyone, not just a few. We want to help everyone else. Also, we've got to look at growth. How is it going to grow? And then, of course, where is it going to grow? How can we actually save money in the future? The idea of a stitch in time saves nine comes into play. We should be sitting there looking at, can we, is there expenditures we can do now that would be more expensive in the future? Can we cut off some future expenses? And then also, we'll take a look at, as she said, the bond rating, because a lot of our stuff is purchased on, is paid for on credit, so we do have to pay back those bonds. So we want to make sure that that stays there. So my main thing is, I'm going to take a look at what we can do for everyone. And can I honestly, if, if one of the residents come up and asks, what did you do with my $3,095? Can I honestly tell them what we did? And with a straight face, say it was important? If it was something frivolous and I wasted their money, man, it's going to be really hard for me to live with myself on that one and be able to honestly deal with the residents. So that's why I sit here and crunch numbers. I mean, literally, I came in with a calculator, so that if some number like this comes up, I can quickly tell you that this budget is $3,095 per resident. So we want to make sure that we do it reasonably and the most good for the most people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nasra?
Thank you. Budget. You know, we all work with budgets, whether we own our businesses, whether our homes or anywhere. We all have to look at what we make and what we can spend. And that's what the city of Mankato actually does. We talk about keeping the levy the same for the past 11 years at 44.6. It's actually the county that raises our real estate taxes, as it isn't the city of Mankato that raises the taxes. That's number one. And to me, inflation is everywhere. What is important to me is that I give my community, my citizens, the same service that they are accustomed to, not less. If I have to raise the taxes to keep that service at the level that my citizens expect of me, of expect of everyone, then so be it. I'm not saying raising taxes to the point where that it doesn't make sense. But we have to look at our budget. We have to see what we have to, to keep going. Retention for employees, that's number one. That's number one wherever you go. Livability, to make sure that our parks are clean, that our parks are safe, that we have things for our children, whether it be Turtle Lot Park, that hadn't been touched in I don't know how many decades. That was, it was time for it to be done. The council did talk about it for more than a year. It needed to be done. We all looked at it, we saw the guts of it, and what we relied on was the city of Mankato staff. We are not professionals in accountings and so forth. We rely on the staff of the city of Mankato, who are professionals, who have answered all of our questions. They weren't easy questions. Our council is not easy on our staff when it comes to the budget. I believe, with all my heart, that you have to work with your budget, 1 million percent. But as a business, I also have to have a cushion in the back. God forbid, if anything happened to the wastewater treatment, and we didn't have funds in the back in the bank to keep it going or to fix it, we'd be in a lot of trouble. We'd be going back and borrowing money to be able to fix millions of dollars. So we have to figure this out. We have to have that cushion. Do we want to raise taxes? Nobody wants to raise taxes. Nobody wants to, to pay more than what they have to. But I believe that we, for being responsible for the community and the, and the amenities that we give our citizens, we need to do what we have to do. At home, you know, sometimes, Kevin, you were saying you have to take a second job. We're not saying, you know, but you have to work with what you have.
Thank you.
And I, I truly believe that, okay, I'll be quiet.
You're up next, so don't get too comfortable.
How can you keep, what, what happened? Okay, you go right ahead, Andy. I'll talk to you later.
So we're going to keep going back and forth, just like you did. So Nasra, you're up here with our next question from Ashley.
Yes, and we're going to switch topics to economic development. So when it comes to economic development, our region values collaboration and partnership. As such, our region has been celebrated as a national model for public-private partnership. What will be your approach to economic development to ensure that Mankato is an attractive place to do business?
I was just got back, I was at local, Brownfield is a nonprofit business that helps with redevelopment of land. Take Embers, for example, where Bridge Plaza is right now. It was contaminated. So we work as a community and as the leaders with the MPCA, the EPA, and the Minnesota D to get grants and so forth, to be able to take what we have already, if it's contaminated or whatever we need to do, we get those grants to help us with affordable housing, like we're doing at St. Clair Lofts down the road here. It was, it belonged to the city of Mankato, but it needed work, it needed, so the city of Mankato staff, along with the leaders here, worked together to get that. It took from, I believe it was 1980-something to 2022, before we broke ground on that. So what would I do? I would work with the developers, I would work with the, the leaders, the Minnesota D, the, the Brownfield, anyone that we can to help us grow and use what we already have. You know, sometimes we build these beautiful buildings, and one business moves from one old building to the new building, and all of a sudden, we don't have any, we look at this building and there's, there's no tenants in it anymore because it's old. So we have to work to keep our, our community together. One thing we can be proud of here in Mankato is the Mankato vision was to grow Mankato as a whole. You see downtown is vibrant, you see the, up top of the hill is vibrant. You look all around, Mankato is growing as one. And so that is the beauty of Mankato and of working together with the leaders to be able to grow it at a rate and not use anything or destroy anything that can be used.
Thank you, Nasra. Toby?
There's been actually quite a few really great developments locally. We can see on Riverfront, we've actually tried to convert Riverfront, it's a one-year experiment, into seeing whether or not it can be a walkable avenue, see if we can increase the small businesses. So as this experiment continues on, we'll take a look and see what it actually has done for the small businesses. Because that's one of the ones is, can we expand, help the small businesses come in. Another project that I, another aspect of the city council seems to be really good at is tax increment financing. That is where if a developer comes in and increases the property value of a piece of land, they actually will receive the extra property taxes that would have been charged at the newer level back to them. And that's actually a pretty good way to do it. It encourages the developers to come in and work with us, because we're going to allow them to build up the value of the land, and they get the benefits from it. And of course, after a decade or however many years it ends, but for that short period of time, the developers actually get a benefit from it. So it's great ways for the city to kind of work together with developers, and we can expand things. We can actually take that Mankato vision and see how we can expand the city as a whole. And I do like the fact that Riverfront is now trying to move to a more walkable city by reducing the traffic. And that is one of the experiments. I'd like to see more of those go, and then also crunch the numbers afterwards, to see has it helped the small businesses? Has it increased and made the city more livable? And has it made a better city? And specifically, just to go back to the last question, I mean, are our residents, what are they getting for their $3,095?
Partnerships is something that is just in the water, I think, here in Mankato. We are constantly trying to work with greater Mankato growth, in all your different divisions that you have, to make things work. The River Rambles, that happened a couple of weeks ago, that your division of tourism put together with the help of city staff to make sure those routes were safe and, and good to go. And, and we had a great event here for that. There are different types of businesses that we look at here in our community. There's the national levels, the big box stores that come in. There's regional businesses that come in, and then there's our small homegrown businesses. All of those need a certain amount of basic services. What I'm told from developers is that if they're going to bring a new business in, build a building, get it up and running for their new business, for every week that they're delayed, it costs them $10,000. Now, those were the figures 12 years ago, so it's probably a lot more now. So to encourage new business, what you need is a city that operates super efficiently. From the time that plan comes in to the city staff, they review it, it quickly goes to the planning commission, and then from there, it quickly goes to city council, it gets the approval. It's a very efficient process here in Mankato. And we can see that by the number of businesses that have come in and built here. I've had builders from Rochester come in and say, I'm going to keep building in Mankato because its process is so good. So after you get to that, and you actually start building the building, you have to get a building permit, you have to have inspections done, and those are done very quickly. Our building permits, you can get them online. If you call for an inspector, that inspector will be out there. And those things are important to businesses that build. And Andy, you're smiling.
Thank you.
It, it, it just is. And to be a growing city is important. We added 5,000 people in the last 10 years. That's 500 people that came into this town and started to live each year.
Thank you, Ms. Farman.
And that's...
We are at our time?
Oh, I'm at a time.
We were going to move on.
That's why you...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michael, you're up.
Yeah, so I, I think to maintain and attract businesses, I need to kind of revert back to the last question. I think a big part of what attracts economic development is maintaining our existing infrastructure and having those services in place, the public safety, the streets, and the infrastructure. So that's a key component of it. But then also, I would say maximizing our relationship with the public, private, nonprofit relationships here in the community to make sure the businesses that do exist in town, we're still continuing to facilitate, facilitate and provide a community that they want to remain and work in, and that their employees and staff want to live and reside in. And not only just on, on the, on the for-profit business, but on the nonprofit that offer a lot of those services that draw people into this community. For instance, like the Children's Museum of Southern Minnesota is a large asset to this community that I know a lot of people that live up in Cougar Estates and on the east side in my ward, that when they're looking to, to do things with their family outside of hockey or All Seasons Arena, or things to do in the winter time, Children's Museum is something that stands out as a recruiting tool. So looking to where we can support those local nonprofits and, and private organizations to keep Mankato not only a thriving business community, but also a thriving community that people want to move to and start their business, or move to and work with a, a business. Also, working in the city council capacity with our partners at the county, state, and federal side of things, to look at securing any funding or grants we can to improve infrastructure and expand. I do have that experience working in the niche of the veterans world, working on state and federal legislation too. So I, I would like to bring that approach of working not only just with the businesses, but our state and federal partners too, to help make sure we secure what we can to support the current businesses and incoming ones. Thank you.
Thank you. And Don?
I wrote some notes down while everybody else was speaking. And the thing that distracted me is that everybody needs to have skin in the game. Business needs to work a little bit to attract other businesses and to work with education to make sure they're hiring employees to stay here. Government needs to have skin in the game, tax increment financing. And, you know, something that speaks loudly for how this community does it well, and I would look for more opportunities such as this, and this is small scale, but as I said, I think it speaks loudly, the downtown arts partnership that brings us the sculpture walk every year. Local business people got together with city government people, both put their monies into it, visited other communities. How did they revitalize their downtowns by, with art? We now have the art walk every year. The city maintains flower baskets. The local businesses pay a couple extra, extra bucks so that that happens. I know that what the local businesses pay, I am part owner of one of the local businesses downtown, Tan and Bagels, I know that what we pay doesn't cover all of what the city provides. But it provides an opportunity for everybody to come downtown. They want to take the sculpture walk. They bump into other small businesses. So when we do things like this, and everybody has skin in the game, it benefits all of us. And so asking government to take a small risk, business to take sometimes a bigger risk, and everybody can move forward in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kevin?
Thanks. One of these days, I'll shut this off after I'm done talking. But, you know, I was just thinking, I believe this is a large part of what this position needs to be. We need to continue to grow the city of Mankato. And I've spent the last 25 years selling, selling a program for the people that are easily forgotten, that people blame for a lot of things, and develop programs that are nationally known and known throughout the state of Minnesota, some of the best programs for people that, with addictions and controlled substance issues. So I see selling Mankato as easy. I mean, when you, when you walk down the streets and listening to what Don says, everything that's, that's going on in the city of Mankato, and getting everybody to work together, that's what the programs that I run work on, is team and working together and bringing people, either community members or other people that are interested in developing the city of Mankato more, working with other communities, seeing what other communities are doing to develop their cities, that, that's working for them, and bringing it to Mankato, and utilizing what, what has worked for them in the city of Mankato, I think is really important. But, and continuing to develop what's good in Mankato. Our, our, our rates of, no, I'm just, I wrote down a note and I forgot it. Our crime rates are very low. We want to keep them that way. Our infrastructure is some of the best in Minnesota. We want to keep it that way. So continue to develop and working towards things that'll bring people here in the future.
Thank you. And Kevin?
Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely. So when it comes to economic development, our region values collaboration and partnership. As such, our region has been celebrated as a national model for public-private partnership. What will be your approach to economic development to ensure that Mankato is an attractive place to do business?
Thank you very much. I've always thought that the heart and soul of a community is the small businesses, and especially startup businesses, small businesses. I think it's a wonderful thing when you get a large corporation to come in and provide hundreds and hundreds of jobs. I think that's a great thing. But the heart and soul is always going to be the individuals that are starting small businesses. And to that end, the city needs to be doing things for those type of people. They need to partner with, you know, the smallest of businesses. And, and I want to give you, I, I've opened businesses all over the upper Midwest, and I've worked with city governments all over the Midwest, and I've fought battles with cities. Here in Mankato, years ago, there used to be a real problem. It's not there anymore. I mean, it's gotten so much better. But I was, I was in the middle of a construction project, and a city inspector came in and just started working me over. And, you know, make these changes, make these changes. And I'm, okay, fine, 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 fine. But it got to a point where it was very frustrating. And I, and I said, you know, I'm just, all I'm trying to do is meet the codes, you know? You know, your job is to help me do that. You don't need to be, you know, there, there doesn't need to be this tension. And he said, my job is not to help you meet the codes. My job is to protect people from you. Now, that's a more common thought in, in, in cities than you would imagine, that somehow the city is protecting some of its people from other people. So I, I'd, I'd like to see a couple of things happen. Obviously, one is you don't want that type of attitude permeating the, the city. But the other thing is, is that I, I think that when you're starting up a small business, and you know nothing about business, and all you're trying to do is do it right, I think that the city should have programs or something that help these people get started. think that the city should have programs or something that help these people get started. Um, because these are the small businesses down, you know, down on, um, Front Street and, and in other locations. I mean, these, these are end, gonna end up being the heart of the city, and in a lot of cases, they're gonna end up being the larger businesses further down the road.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
When it comes to economic development and our city of Mankato, I think it's important for a few different things. What draws people to town is gonna be your schools, whether your community is safe, making sure that there's opportunity, and a lot of that comes with the revitalization of Mankato, and a lot of work has been done downtown, as mentioned by some of the others, and making it a more livable place. But use, being able to use some of the tools that the city already has in place. We have just talked about, um, expanding on some of our programming, we're encouraging our staff to go out to businesses to, to talk with them about what is available for them, to be able to expand, to be able to add more employees, to be able to do new things with their community, or within their community. I think that being able to partner with the county and with the state on a lot of their programs and help move forward, that is how the Civic Center got done, which that brings business. Having some of those amenities, things that MSU has done, allows for our community to grow and improve.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. So Jessica, we're gonna come back to you right away, and we're gonna talk about housing. So I'll set it up a little bit, but then we'll get to the question. So, housing continues to be a major concern, uh, in our community. The city of Mankato's most recent housing study in 2020 recommended additional housing units at all levels. As such, local developers have been eager to meet the demand. In fact, there are four projects proposed in the city center alone that would add 200 housing units in the next year. So here's the question. How will you approach housing in our community? How will you ensure that there, we are reducing barriers to new housing developments?
What were the two questions?
How will you approach housing in our community, and then reduce barriers?
Okay. So, I'm excited about all of the projects downtown. I think having some apartments more in the downtown area will help alleviate some of the problems that have been mentioned earlier with people wanting to leave town. Our business has partnered with, um, MSU over the last 10 or 15 years. We've had interns in our office, and they often wanna leave and go to Minneapolis because they want that feeling of living downtown and being able to be part of a community, and they're not ready to buy a house yet. So I think having units down downtown will improve that. The other thing is, we just had a meeting regarding housing, and one thing I think we could do for affordable housing is we have, um, rental restrictions in Mankato that only allow, unless you have a grandfathered license, for two unrelated individuals to live together. But there's a lot of places in our community, Lincoln Park neighborhood, near and near, um, the Judicial Center downtown, that have much larger houses and used to be able to have four or five people, individuals, living in them. And if you allowed for those type of changes, that would instantly free up more affordable housing. Having two people live in a house that's charging $1,200 is very different than having four people live in that house. And I think that would allow for some of what we talk about on a very regular basis of the, of people who are looking for more affordable houses, to entry-level jobs, to be able to afford to live in Mankato and not feel like they need to be outside of our town.
Thank you. Kevin?
Let me collect my thoughts here on this. Um, I think Mankato is doing an excellent job on housing. Obviously, we're in an incredible growth, uh, spurt, and, uh, there's housing of all kinds going up. I think there's some questions about affordable housing, uh, that are, that are hanging out there, and, and that's a very interesting, interesting subject, because, um, nature abhors a vacuum, and, and so does business. So if there's, if there's a dearth of affordable housing, there has to be a reason for that. And, uh, I certainly would wanna investigate the reason for that. You know, why aren't, um, why aren't builders building affordable housing? What are the, what are the barriers to, to affordable housing? And I know a lot of times it has to do with the, um, the upfront costs, the sunk costs of, of meeting regulations and codes and, and, uh, those type of items. And so that's something that I definitely would wanna look at. But, uh, as far as, uh, as far as the availability of housing, um, it seems like we're staying at least a half a step ahead of that. Uh, and I, and I think that's a good thing.
Thank you, sir. Kevin?
So...
Could you hit your button for me, please? See, you were...
Knew if I shut it off, there was gonna be a trouble.
Shut it off, and here we are.
Um, so, you know, lately I've noticed a lot of the business, or a lot of the rental places in Mankato that are being put up are, are for a certain income level. Um, and I think we need to really take a look at how we can build housing for everybody in our community, 'cause not everybody in the community is making the income available to move into some of these places. I think we have to look at how we can make affordable housing for everybody in our community, and there's ways of doing that. I just sat in, um, last week on a, an Affordable Housing forum, and sat next to a great person who was informing me, there's all kinds of grants, there's all kinds of money out there, state and federal, that it never gets used ever, ever. I think we need to work with those agencies to make that information more, um, accessible, easier to get to, for the people that need it. Um, I think that, right, like I said, right now, the barriers obviously is there's not enough housing in Mankato. How can we work with, uh, places in Mankato that to, to start building more, to develop more, to get some, um, some tax breaks in building those houses? And again, not just looking at them in certain areas or for certain income levels, but for everybody in the city of Mankato.
Thank you, sir. Don?
This is an age-old question. Uh, we see this all across the country as communities, one community becomes more attractive than another, it's becoming gentrified. Well, those who can afford it and wanna be there, move in, and local peoples are priced out. And it becomes harder and harder to live in a place that you know. And, so, yeah, it's the age-old problem. And how, what are all the approaches to help address that? True public housing, where government owns and pays for the housing and rents individuals? Um, those projects always don't go very well, doesn't really help out anyone. Um, do, does government create even better and bigger tax incentives to private industry to come and build more housing? But then still, the rents are very high, uh, for all, for others. Are there grant-funded projects, uh, grant-funded ways to do this? Are there other public assistance programs that are larger than the city? Um, some communities around the country, uh, I almost hesitate to say this in this forum, go to rent control, uh, to help, uh, with affordable housing. I'm not necessarily proposing that for this community. Um, and, so this is tough. Is there a silver bullet for this? I don't think there is a silver bullet. I think, once again, everybody has to have skin in the game. And the skin in the game is, can we increase tax increment financing? Can we, uh, create more housing units? Can we change, uh, any of the, uh, the rental regulations in the neighborhoods we have so there could be more renters without disturbing the character of the neighborhood? All of these things need to be considered, and this is not easy. But every commu- many communities across the country, across the globe, are grappling with this same issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Don. Michael, to you.
So, how, how I would approach it, uh, is looking at strategic areas of development, uh, looking at utilizing, uh, TIF, uh, Tax Incremental Financing. Um, I know there's been a lot of focus on the downtown area with those rentals, which there was a, a high demand, but I, I think we can't forget about the developing and, uh, expanding parts of our community on the east and south side, uh, so we're not leaving them out for possible developmental, uh, possibilities too as well. Um, as, as far as, uh, the new construction home, there's been a lot of development and expansion on that east side of town. I, I would also concur, uh, with some of the comments earlier, that looking potentially at that rental density that's been in place, uh, for a while, but not only just in the vacuum of Mankato, um, as a community in the valley here, we, we also have to factor in our partners across the river who have an even lower rental density than we do on this side of the river. So, if I was on the council, I would look, uh, try to get some partnership on a, uh, intergovernmental working group, uh, between this community and our partners to the north, so we could strategically work together so we're not, uh, offsetting one and competing with each other, so we're growing together to, to provide for this community. Uh, then I would also, uh, look at, uh, where our schools and where our next need is, uh, developing and, and how we can ensure we have, uh, single-family homes and, uh, developing homes. And overcoming barriers, that's actually kinda my, my former expertise. I used to work for Minnesota Assistance Council for Veterans. We were a federal contractor that did, uh, housing, uh, programs for veterans that were homeless or, uh, soon to becoming homeless, and we partnered with, uh, DOL, HUD, and VA to, uh, work on getting income-based vouchers in this community. So I, I think there's federal and state partnerships there we could explore, uh, but then also too, uh, Mankato operates the Housing Redevelopment Authority for the area, so making sure our staff have all the tools that they need, uh, to develop and implement, uh, those plans so our residents can overcome those barriers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Forman?
Thank you. We are currently exploring, um, land trust, the concept of land trust, uh, to, uh, use with our partners, with Southwest Minnesota Housing. And, and that's a method wherein, uh, the land is put in a trust, and when you buy a house that's on that land, you don't buy the land, you rent the land. Uh, it's similar in concept to what you find in mobile home parks, manufactured home parks, where, uh, they lease the land, but they own the, they own the manufactured homes. Um, I also think that manufactured housing is another area we can look at to help manufactured housing is, um, it's inspected by the federal government before it leaves the factory. Uh, it's something that, um, is, the new housing is, it's good housing, that it would be affordable housing. I agree that we're not too behind on having places to live, places that are affordable. And, so we are looking at several different things to do to keep expanding that. Um, if a developer comes in and asks us for TIF, and if it meets the criteria, that's examined by an independent accounting firm as to whether or not the project would happen if, but for the TIF. Um, so we do use that when it does, when it does fit the criteria. Um, and we've been breaking ground every year on some project. Some of it here, some of it up by Rosa Parks, we move it around the city. So, I think we're, we're well aware of that, and we're using many different tools right now to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby?
Well, let's see, it's a two-part question. The first part of the question is how to approach housing in the community. Um, the simple answer is supply. We need to increase the supply. We can't do anything about the demand, the city's growing, so we're gonna work on supply. And of course, some of the barriers that I'm looking at, that I consider reducing is, once again, the TIF comes into play. Can we help the developers so that they have skin in the game, and that they benefit from their investment in there? Other things we should look at is the restrictions, like the unrelated individuals living in a house. With the current, with society's current idea of blended families, there are families where they are a family, but they may not all, they not be related directly. So we should actually kinda look at whether those restrictions are still up to date. Are they appropriate? Um, as we're looking at restrictions, what other restrictions do we have in the rental market? Can we go ahead and take a look at this and see whether or not we have restrictions that reduce rental properties? For example, the rental density restrictions? Should we relook at the, should we look at those, see whether or not we can increase them to free up more, more rental units? Um, so we should be actually looking at those things as a city council, and what would actually allow our community to expand in the future, and how we can reduce those barriers, how we can reduce the restrictions so that developers can come in and develop these sites.
Thank you, sir. Najal?
Thank you. You know, when I first started, um, thinking about, um, housing and so forth, you think about, you have the low income, you have workforce, and, um, affordable housing. You have all those three, so how do you work with that? How do you do that? Um, to me, workforce is the most, one of the most important things, is when our, um, our young citizens that graduate from the university and so forth, they don't qualify for low income because they're making too much money. The workforce comes in between that, where we can help the, that, um, young couple that are married and wanted to, to live here in Mankato. And that's where the land trust comes in. I thought that was probably one of the best ideas that I've heard in a long time, where some of the people that want to take that opportunity to buy that for a first house and to be able to afford it. Not everybody can, of course, but if we can give them that $24 a month rent, but they own that house, and then when they're, can afford that other house, their dream house that they want, they go ahead and they sell that house, but they sell that house at a reasonable price so that someone else can, at that time, be able to start their first home. Low income and affordable housing, Mankato's doing a great job on that. We've got the Sibley Parkway, where when we did, um, Night to Unite, I went out there with, um, Matt DeRouze, and we, we looked at, it was, you, you saw the people enjoying it. We went up to Rosa Parks, again, affordable housing there. Mankato is, thinks about, thinks, the staff does, I shouldn't say Mankato, the staff thinks about that. And sometimes we think, "Oh, it's easy, just go ahead and go ahead and do that." I go back to Sinclair Lofts. That took over 20 years to even happen. It happened four, uh, four years ago when we were on the, um, first council meeting. They came in front of us to help, uh, they wanted to go to the federal government to get an aid so that they can build it. They were denied. So when we think something is easy and we can do this, we have to look back and sit back and, and see how, what happens? What are the steps that we have to take? TIF is very important, I agree with you on that, again, but they have to follow the criteria. Money isn't just handed out to them. Again, we talked to, uh, to a developer where they're building apartments, we asked, "Can you do four or five, uh, affordable apartments?" Came back and said that they would be able to do that because it would not fit with their budget. I know you're looking at me, Andy.
Thank you, Naj. We're coming right back at you. So, we're, uh, we've got, we're already burned through, uh, 70 minutes here, so we're gonna try and squeeze in a couple more questions here, folks. So Naj, we're coming right back at you.
Alright, the next question. Currently, a community-wide effort is being undertaken to better understand the status of inclusivity in the greater Mankato region. The results of this study will be used to improve organizational and community diversity and inclusivity efforts by addressing barriers to services and help future planning efforts. Now the question, do you think there are opportunities in our community related to inclusivity?
Do I believe there are programs?
Opportunities.
Opportunities, yes. I believe there are opportunities for diversity, I'm one of them. Um, I believe that there is. I believe, um, more and more, uh, we, we see that inclusivity with, um, our citizens. Uh, you go around and, and you look and you see each business is trying to improve, um, the culture that they are working with, with the people that they're working with. Uh, we want to be one community, inviting everyone in, because everyone is equal. There is no one that's better, whether you're white, whether you're black, whether, whatever religion you are. We are one community where, so I believe, um, each business in each area is working harder and harder, whether it's our churches, whether it's our schools, whether it's our communities, community or whether our city. I believe we are moving in the right direction, and I believe we're a very, very inclusive community.
Thank you. Toby?
Actually, there are a lot of opportunities for inclusivity and diversity. Actually, uh, since 1994, I've been working with Upward Bound, either part-time or full-time as an academic advisor, and even go back as a volunteer in the Springs through the recruiting, and most of the program that they do is how to help the underprivileged get to college, get through college, pay for it and apply. So when I was an academic advisor, that was one of the major things I was doing, is working with underprivileged youth and various, um, ethnic groups to try to help them. They changed over the years, depending upon recent immigrants, but how to get them into college, how to get them prepared for it, applied, how to do financial aid, where we can find scholarships for them, how can we get them tours of college? Our goal is, is to act, the goal with Upward Bound was to get everyone the opportunity to go to college, and that was one of the big things we do. So there are opportunities out there. We can take a look at it at city level and see how we can include everyone, because everybody deserves to enjoy the city and have access to all their services.
Yes, there are...
Yes, there are opportunities, and we try to explore those opportunities constantly. When I look at our business community here and go in and I look at the staff that are there, it's becoming increasingly diverse. And that's just very exciting to see that. One of the things we do here, one of the things we do as a city, is we have a really fantastic mobility bus service. So, if we have people in our community who can't drive, who can't get around someplace, we have a really simple application. I'm going to say it's $3 to ride the bus. It's about in that ballpark. And that's part of our being inclusive here, is that we're looking at ways to, to promote that, to do that, and to facilitate those opportunities. I think one of the things that we have talked about on the city council is also the need to make sure that our employees look like our citizens, so that when there is hiring going on, especially in our public safety area, that our employees look like the people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I absolutely think there is avenues and areas where we can improve on diversity in the community. I would also like to echo that the mobility bus is a fantastic service. It's, I believe, 350 one-way, so seven bucks round trip if you want to go to the mall or any sort of recreational event for those that are facing some of those challenges. I would, I would say from the city standpoint, we should look to our community leaders and not think that we have to make that mold. I would say the Greater Mankato Diversity Council and some of our other partners up at MSU. But then also, there has been some projects in the past, the Tapestry Project here in Mankato, on making sure that we help foster communication and help grow communication across all populations. And with that too, I think another part of engagement includes our youth. I do like, as a parent that has a child at Prairie Winds, I know they have a very good rapport with the school and community resource officers. I think that's a good benefit and service the city provides up there. And I think having a city in, in those points of youth with diverse populations, with our new first and second generation populations here too as well, we can continue to grow it. Thank you.
Thank you. And to Don.
You prefaced your question by saying, "Address barriers to services," but then you asked, "Are there opportunities for inclusivity?" These are two separate but related issues. So, barriers to services, I don't know how the mobility bus works, but if it will take anybody from anywhere in town to where the services are, that's a good thing. We have a pretty good staff that does geographic information system work for, for the city, and they're able to map routes and paths and where are those who need the services versus where the services are. First, making sure that the service providers are in a place that those who need the services can get to very easily. That reduces barriers. Identifying what the services are, and it doesn't matter, inclusivity is social and economic and racial and ethnic and gender, it is all of those things. And inviting everybody to everything. Invite community leaders from every group to come to what is going on. Ask for, ask the Greater Diversity, ask the Diversity Council for their input. Ask every religious body for their input. Wherever we can reach community, we need to ask them. What, what are the barriers? What is not happening in those communities? And thinking outside the box here. Do you only talk to the pastors of churches? Or do you reach out to the imam? Do you reach out to the people who own businesses where new immigrants are going and ask for the input there? Thinking outside the box, there are opportunities where we can reduce those barriers. Thanks.
Thank you. And Kevin?
You know, I believe there is really good inclusivity in, in the city of Mankato, but I think there's areas we can grow. Let's be honest, it's, it's easy to talk about the programs that we have. It's easy to say they're, they're here, but how accessible really are they to the people that need them? How can we do a better job within our community, making sure that people just don't hear about them, but they know how to access them and they know how to use them and they're easily accessible? I think we need to, you know, Don's mentioned a couple times, "Get in the game." I think we need to go back to everybody in our community and get everybody on board with how can we do a better job in the community at making sure these programs are accessible to everybody? And really holding business and community leaders, colleges, whomever within, in our community accountable for, for making sure that diversity is, is foremost in, in our community. Like I said, I think, I think we do a great job of it here in Mankato, but there's always a way to grow. And I think the best way to grow is to work together to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kevin?
Well, first off, let me say that I, I think Mankato is a diverse community. You know, a year, years ago, it wasn't, but, but it is now. And I think that as a city, we've done an incredible job of welcoming people and bringing people into the community that make it a better community. And I think that is a great thing. The question I always ask though is that, you know, what is, what is the end game with diversity and inclusion? You know, I, it would seem to me that the, the, the end game should be that it is an organic process, that it becomes an organic process, something that doesn't have to be managed, that, that people just automatically take other people for their individual characteristics and, and for their talents, and, and they look beyond all the, the superficial immutable Just as a note of caution right now, if, if you follow it on a national basis, inclusivity has become exclusivity. And that's a real problem. Right now, there's a number of Supreme Court cases percolating up over major institutions denying certain ethnic groups' access to services, especially universities and colleges, based on their race, their gender, their whatever. But it's not what you think it is. You know, currently, there's a movement to deny Japanese, not Japanese, but Asian Americans' access to higher institu, higher public education institutions because they're overrepresented. And so, that, that is not where we want to go. There's also, there also is currently bubbling up an effort to, under the name of inclusivity, to exclude Jews because they're overrepresented, overrepresented in, in the legal and medical professions. This is all being done in the name of inclusivity. So, I think that's a word, word of warning. We've done a great job here. I mean, we have an incredible community made up of all kinds of different people, and, I think everybody agrees that, that that's a positive thing for Mankato. And we want to continue it.
Thank you, sir.
Jessica?
Okay. I think there are a lot of opportunities, but some of the barriers, depending upon whether we're talking about mobility or whether it's cultural, and things that we, that the city could do to improve on would be to make the city website more available in other languages so that some of our newer members of our community that don't necessarily speak English as their first language can navigate the bus routes, where the parks are, other city services that right now might be a challenge for them. I think having free events and continuing to encourage some of the great things that Mankato has done recently, whether it's the Day of the Dead Festival, that really brought Mankato new opportunities last year to learn about other cultures, and keeping those events for the most part free, the powwow. Also, working on things like the splash pad, which I think is one of the amenities that Mankato really needs, because it is, in my opinion, one of the most inclusive things that we could do. It's free, it doesn't matter your age, your gender, your socioeconomic status, you don't have to pay to go to a swimming pool or pay to go use All Seasons Arena. It would be something that would be available for the entire community. So, I definitely think there are some changes that we could make.
Thank you.
Well, folks, we are fast approaching our time here. So, I think we're going to go one more time around, and we are going to finalize with our final question for everybody. So, we will start with Jessica at the end, and we will wrap up with Najwa over here. Ashley, final question.
All right. The final question. As we close, we want to give each of you a chance to answer one simple question. Why should voters vote for you?
I think that I do a great job of representing a lot of different people in Mankato through my connections in the business world, through working with nonprofits. As being someone who has children in the school district, I work with all different kinds of people and interact with a variety of community members. I've done a great job of listening, of getting other people's viewpoints, communicating with them, being attentive to their needs. And I really do enjoy the work and really spend a lot of time on it, and I think I've shown that over the last four years.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, in short, people should vote for me because I care and I can. Like I said before, you know, this is my town. And, and I've had a, a lifetime of experience, and I can, I'm, I, I am very, very capable of handling this position, and, and I really want to see Mankato grow in the future.
Thank you. And Kevin?
Again, the best I can put it is, I believe I'm one of you. I'm not, I'm not special in any different way, but I believe in the city. I believe in advocating for people that either can't advocate for themselves or don't feel like they have the voice. I sat in your seats. I've been where you are. I've been thinking, gosh, it'd be really easy, you know, I wish I could do that, but I don't have the confidence to do that. So, this is, this is a big step for me. I'm not, I'm, like I said, I'm not any different than anybody else that's sitting out there today. But I've spent the majority of my life advocating for people, and I truly believe that's what a city council person should do, is advocate for the citizens of the city. And that's what I do best, and that's what I would, that's the reason I think I would deserve your vote.
Thank you. And Don?
I'll listen to you, my constituents. I'll carry forward your thoughts and concerns regarding our community to the council. I've spent my entire career studying and teaching college students about the interactions between people and society and our earth. I would apply those decades of learning to real-world, everyday actions needed to responsibly run a city, and also to steward our tax dollars responsibly. And I, I'm also working just to give back to the community that supported my family and me for 25 years.
Thank you. Michael?
I would ask for the residents of Ward 1's support, because I think I have a proven track record, a track record and legacy of service, not only in the military, but then also in the nonprofit sector, and then still in my everyday work in the veterans' world. I am as much a part of this community and this community as much a part of me as Riverfront is a part of Mankato. Like I said, I grew up, I was born and raised here. I am grateful for the opportunities this community has provided me and how it has shaped me in a positive direction, and how it is shaping the next generation of my family in a positive direction. I'm committed to being here year-round and engaged with my constituency and be in their voice for the council and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Karen?
I have 12 years of experience on the council. City government is millions of dollars of, of business. It's complicated, it's complex. Just understanding how our impacts and decisions on budgets impact our bond rating, which is another factor in the budget. For 12 years, I've looked after the interest of the community. We have progressed in that time. We're, as many of us have pointed out, we're doing a pretty good job in a lot of different areas. And that's because we have been making these decisions over the past 12 years. That's it.
Thank you. Toby?
Why should vote for me? Actually, a long history of serving others, helping as academic advisor, making sure that everybody, even the underprivileged, have access to all services and can do well. Also, I have an analytical mind that actually allows me to crunch numbers and make sure that we do the most good for the most people. This way, I can make sure that all the residents gets the most bang for their $3,095 they pay each year. So, I would like to be mayor so that I can help usher Mankato into a future of growth in a sustainable fashion.
Thank you. And Najwa?
I'm going to make it very simple. I love this community. For the last four years, I've been its biggest advocate, its biggest cheerleader, and I will continue to do that. If you know me, you know that this community means more than anything else. It helped my family come from nothing into living the American dream, and I'm so proud of being a Mankatawan. So, thank you, and that's why I'm running for mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you to our candidates for the discussion this evening. Please, join me in thanking them. Thank you to Ashley of KTOE and Radio Mankato for your partnership this evening. Thank you to the city of Mankato for hosting us. And thanks to all of you for attending this evening. As a reminder, our last forum is this Thursday night in this room at 6:00 PM for the Leaworth County Board of Commissioners. All of our forums are recorded by our friends at KTV and Bethany Lutheran College and are available online, along with candidate biographies at GreaterMankatoElections.com. Thank you, good night, and don't forget to vote.